Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special call. Muskogee Municipal Authority. Normally, I'd be a little bit nervous with all the attorneys we have present tonight, but I think there's a reason for that. Before we get started, we'll have our city clerks swearing and our newly appointed municipal judges. We're officiating around here.
You let me know when you're ready. Ready? Okay. If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jase Stout.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
All laws of the State of Oklahoma.
All laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma.
Of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma.
And I will not knowingly.
And I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance.
For the performance or nonperformance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the office of municipal judge.
Of the office of municipal judge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right. Congratulations.
Okay, if we would, we'll start off with the invocation. Dear Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we welcome your presence among us, guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. Thank you for always being with us. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I guess we're going to do a flag salute, too. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now the Oklahoma pledge.
I salute the flag of the State of Oklahoma. It symbolizes peace, unity, and all people.
Roll call.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of November 25, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending November 30, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mayor, members of the council, before you this evening, you have the claims for November of 2024. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting is now adjourned. Okay, we will now call to order a special call in Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, December 9, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here. Item number one.
Consider approval of MRA minutes of November 25, 2024, or take other necessary action.
I've got a question. On our minutes present, we show Alex Reynolds.
We will get that corrected.
And it might have been in a couple of different places, but...
We'll make sure that's taken care of.
Okay. Not that we dislike Alex, but he wasn't here. That's all I could find.
Okay.
Any other observations? Move for approval. Second. I have a motion and a second.
As presented.
As presented.
As amheaded.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll now adjourn that meeting and go to our special call Muskogee City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4244A. I request to rezone the property located at 118 North K Street from C1 Local Commercial to R2 Two Family, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now opening a public hearing. Sarah, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a rezone request for 118 North K Streets. The property was Zoned C1 Local Commercial, and we're requesting it be rezoned to R2 Two Family. Previous use was a single-family residence. The structure has since burnt and been demolished, and the lot is currently vacant. The proposed use is to build a duplex and to replace the previous single-family home. This does conform to the Muskogee Comprehensive Plan and future land use map, and the staff did request that it be approved.
Okay, is there anybody here to address this item? Public. Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. And have council discussion.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of an engineering services agreement with Olson Engineering in an amount not to exceed $65,770 for the Economic Development Assistance Grant pertaining to road reconstruction, sidewalk construction, and the addition of underground storm sewer in the Muskogee Medical District, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will now call to order a special call in Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, December 9, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll now adjourn that meeting and go to our special call Muskogee City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number four, please.
Consider approval of resolution number 3018 expressing support for the appointment of Tara Shows to the Oklahoma Municipal League Regional Council, declaring said appointment to be for the benefit of the City of Muskogee and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be for the public purpose or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is a request to nominate Ms. Tara Shows, who is our Economic Development Manager, to be nominated to the OML's Regional Board in District Number Two. We feel that she will be a great representative for the City of Muskogee as well as the surrounding municipalities. Happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
She'll like a great addition to that committee.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number five, please.
Consider approval of the adoption of resolution number 3019, adopting a City of Muskogee mission and purpose statement, and setting priorities for the future as discussed at the City Council retreat, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and to council. It's an honor that I'm able to bring this item to you tonight. What a great experience we had on November the 19th and 20th, as we came together as a council family, as a city family, to have our retreat, a two-day event. And so I come to report some of the great things that came out of that event. And I'll start here. This summer, myself and Councilor Cranford had the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities. And there was a town hall meeting that was held in Chicago that I'll never forget. The CEO of the National League of Cities did an interview with the mayor of Chicago, Mr. Brandon Johnson. And so during that interview, I don't know if you've ever watched the Chicago City Council meeting, they don't have any rules of decorum. People can sign up to speak and come, and they can call you dirty names, they can talk about you, your family, and they can really dog you out. And so the CEO asked the mayor of Chicago, "Why do you do this?" He said, "You know, one of the things that keep me going is I remember the why. The why I signed up for this, and the why I come to work every day, and the why I do what I do for the betterment of my city." And, you know, never forget the why. It's what he encouraged a audience full of city councilors and mayors from all over the United States, which brings me to my point tonight. We heard a mission statement. The city had a mission statement. It was a long, big paragraph, but we heard a mission statement that a great author by the name of Mr. Mike Miller made popular throughout the city. And I understand that this mission statement is something that he would tell employees when he got ready to hire them. And we fell in love with this mission statement, and it simply says this, "It is a privilege to make our neighbors' lives better every day." And we fell in love with that. That's what we want to do as we have been elected by the people of the city, of our citizens throughout the city. We want to make their lives better every single day. And so with that, we were excited, and we said we wanted to come back before this body and with this resolution. We want to adopt this as our mission statement for our council, for our city workers. All of us must aim to make our neighbors' lives better every day. There were some priorities that we also outlined during this strategic planning event. You'll find those in your packet. I'll just read a couple of them. There's several bullet points, and I do believe that at a later time, the group is going to come and make a full presentation. And so tonight, we're just going to talk about a few of the priorities, show our citizens that we hear them. And we hear them and communicate that our decisions are made for the collective good of our community and our city. Treat all citizens with equality and respect. You know, those are some of the things that we want to make sure that the citizens understand that our task is going to be. We're going to use this mission statement to filter those decisions. Some of the future goals that came out of this session was to grow our city by attracting young families who choose Muskogee as a place to live, work, and have fun, and also set infrastructure priorities. We hear you, Muskogee citizens, when you talk about the infrastructure. So these are some of the things that this resolution outlines, but once again, the main thing is our mission statement. It is a privilege. I am privileged to have this opportunity to sit here and to make my neighbors' lives better every day. And so with that, I would like to move that we approve this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number six, please.
Consider approval to authorize the repair of a recirculating pump located at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $65,000 by Interstate Electric Corporation, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Actually, I'm going to let our Assistant Director, Mr. Rigney, take this item. He's been working on this.
Okay, Mr. Rigney.
Yes, so wastewater treatment plant has four of these recirculating pumps. They recirculate the water from the trickling filter back through the plant. Right now, three of those pumps are running, and that fourth pump that is down is the one we're seeking approval to get repaired. These pumps are about 30 feet long. It's a big to-do to get them out and get them on a trailer and get them to Interstate. When they take these pumps apart, that's when they diagnose it, so that's why it's a not-to-exceed price. They got to get in there and figure out what's wrong, but we have confirmation it won't exceed that number. These are a very important piece of the infrastructure of the new plant. Now, these recirculation pumps are not something that's going to be utilized in the new plant, but we do have to keep the plant running until that new plant is constructed, so we do need approval for this item. Be happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number seven, please.
Consider approval to raise the not-to-exceed amount by $18,705.60, therefore increasing the total not-to-exceed amount to $100,000 for the Water Treatment Plant Lagoon One Cleaning Contract with Tonto Construction Incorporated, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor and council, we did approve an item on October 28 of this year to have the water plant lagoon number one cleaned with the residual out of it. At that time, we did estimate the volume of residual that we had in there, and we felt like it was about a foot and a half deep or 5,960 cubic yards. It was hard to get an exact estimate because we do know the bottom. We know what the bottom elevation is, but the top, this residual is a mud product that's covered in water. So we just had to kind of estimate where the top of that was, and we were short. So we did, at that time, put it on council's agenda, and Tonto Construction won the bid at $13.64 per cubic yard. That price, $13.64, is not changing, but at that council meeting, we did set a not-to-exceed amount price of $81,294, and we are currently right there, and we've got to stop work on the project. We have about a third remaining residual in that pond. We did budget this item at budget cycle for $100,000, so we're simply asking to raise that amount to $100,000. This is appropriate for the state bidding laws. We're not changing the price at Tonto. Actually, we're moving to that. We're simply asking to authorize an overrun not-to-exceed of $100,000. I'll answer any questions, but recommend approval.
Well, simply, we're just paying per cubic foot, so...
Yard.
I mean, that, I'm sorry, per cubic yard, so it is what it is.
Yes, and it's an overrun, so it's a line item, and the bid price is not going up, so...
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eight, please.
Consider approval of an engineering services agreement with Olson Engineering in an amount not to exceed $458,770 for the Economic Development Assistance Grant pertaining to road reconstruction, sidewalk construction, and the addition of underground storm sewer in the Muskogee Medical District, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor and council, we're excited about this one. We have applied for this grant several times. This, today, we're approving an engineering contract to actually do the design work on this project. Clayton Christie with Olson Engineering is here if there's any particular questions for him, but he helped assist us in the grant writing of this project and was very helpful on getting the grant itself. But just to remind council what this project is, we're going to redo the concrete portion of Denver Street that's behind the hospital. And if you've been on it, you know just exactly how bad that street is. So this will redo the concrete portion of Denver. We're not sure it's going to be replaced with Denver. When we get to the bidding process, we'll see. It could be asphalt, but I assume it'll be concrete. The width will remain the same. This will improve the drainage on Denver. And if you're aware, where the emergency entrance to the hospital has always been off 36 Streets, you know how bad that street is as well. This is going to redo 36 Street also. This will put some trail in it that'll tie 34 Street into the head of the Centennial Trail, so that is a great portion of it. This grant is for $2,826,600 is what the grant will be from EDA, and we're going to pay a match of $7,607,604 from stormwater. Didn't do that very well, did I? But Clayton is here. This, again, is for the engineering portion of this project. The amount to pay the engineering services is $458,770. Do recommend approval, and again, Clayton's here if you have any particular questions. I'm very excited to see this move forward.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number nine, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of Blanca Lopez to the Wellness Initiative Coalition to serve a four-year term beginning December 1, 2024, and ending November 30, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Yes, Ms. Lopez comes highly recommended from some leaders here in Muskogee, and I would like to appoint, consider the approval of appointing her. and I would like to appoint, consider the approval of appointing her. She comes again, highly recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, thank you. Item passes. Number 10.
Consider approval of the appointment of Tammy Garner to the War Memorial Trust Authority to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Tracy Cole, beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Yes, Tammy came very highly recommended, and she is presently a full-time mom and has the time to give to this, to this. And she served also in the Army, so she has a passion about being on this, so I'm very happy to appoint her.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Number 11, please.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to Section 307B1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the salary, compensation, and conditions of employment thereto related to municipal judge, first alternate juvenile judge, and second alternate judge positions, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session, including but not limited to approval of employment agreements. E pursuant to Section 307B1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss and appoint an interim city manager and set the salary and benefits thereto, and take appropriate action in open session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We need a motion to go, we're going to return to regular session. Let's do a roll call.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.[1579.51]